We convene from closed session to regular session. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said boards so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Good morning, everyone. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Supervisor Sullivan.
The Pledge of Allegiance will be held in the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, my nation, my God, be with us with the great end of this world.
Yes, Chairman, let's find a pleasure to introduce Melissa Marty, our new office assistant at the Veteran Service Office.
Oh.
Please welcome.
Speaking to the microphone, Jerry.
Well, we need to have, it has to be recorded.
You guys couldn't hear me back there?
Well, we could, but the recording.
All right. Melissa Marty is our new office assistant at the Veteran Service Office, and I'd like the Board of Supervisors to welcome her to the county family.
Welcome.
Welcome. Got your work cut out for you. Hey, report of any actions from closed session?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Any deletions or corrections or additions from board members to the agenda this time? Seeing none, we'll receive reports from supervisors. Supervisor Sullivan, would you like to be in today?
Had a tentative trade agency meeting recently. Dealt with a lot of concerns from constituents up on low divide as to whether they have fire coverage or not, and that's an ongoing conversation, and that needs still, needs to be looked into further. Want to give special thanks to Dave Mason, Code Enforcement, and our Drug Task Force on investigating a possible problem out at Big Flat, and their, the response was really quick. I was happy to hear that. Had attended the joint city-county meeting where we replaced the solid waste board with the full city and county boards and eliminated the stipend, and other than that, that's, got to see how my kid in Halloween gear, that's about it.
Supervisor Hemmingson.
Thank you. Well, Supervisor Sullivan left out a couple, Sullivan, excuse me, Supervisor Sullivan left out a couple of meetings. We had a two-by-two with the Smith River National Recreation Area Representatives, Tyrone Kelly and Mary Kay Vandavere, and their staff, Julie Reneri and Chris, Krista? I don't remember, a new gal that came in. Anyway, we're discussing still, we're kind of back to square one on the roads issues in the Smith River National Recreation Area, and they're going to be working on the environmental stuff and keeping us informed, and we will be working closely with them. Had a few meetings with constituents and staff about solid waste authority, a lot of people thanking me for getting rid of solid waste, and I have to tell them that no, we didn't get rid of solid waste, but we're working on enhancing it, changing it. Had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting. Employments continue to rise. The only time that the employments have gone down was when they've canceled flights. We've had some, several months where they've canceled quite a few flights, but, but other than that, we're up about the same position we were last year. Employments continue to go up, so that's all good. And then I did have a, with Supervisor Sullivan, we had a two-by-two with Redwood State Park, Redwood National Parks and California State Parks. The Redwood National Parks did sign the agreement, so they will keep Milk Creek open, not the watershed, but the campground area. And so that's proceeding on. I finally got a map of Toluodune State Park that I've asked for, I think it's been three or four years. They finally got me the map on digital format, so I'll be able to look at that. And we had some discussion on the hostel. They're still trying to decide where they're going to locate that. And for those of you that said I needed to get a haircut, I did. Thank you, Lester.
Glad to tell you.
Anyway, that was it for me.
Supervisor Mcclair. Yes, in the past couple of weeks, I traveled to Oceanside for the Coastal Commission meeting, which was last week, and I also participated in the city-county meeting. I attended the Sunrise Rotary Event on Saturday. It was well-attended, and people were very friendly and excited about raising money for Rotary projects. I am hoping that the community comes out for the conversation on education that's being part of the healthy families thing. It came out in the paper today on different meeting days, and I'm hoping that people will go and talk about education, about what they like in it, what they, where they can see improvements, because I think that that kind of community conversation is how we change our paradigm on things. I also have started to think about coming up with a plan for restoration of Mahoffer Creek down at the culvert on Pebble Beach, because in the wintertime it backs up and floods the property there that I think that maybe we can find some restoration dollars and improve that, because there's quite a big beaver colony, and there's otters, and there's all sorts of, there's all sorts of animals and critters that live in that creek that we could improve the mouth of that creek, so I'm starting to do some research on that. And I have had numerous constituents talking about the fear of leaving their homes because of the number of burglaries in our community, and I think that maybe that kind of community conversation also needs to somehow be, we need to come up with a, with where we stand as a community and what we need to have happen, because people are literally worrying about leaving for vacation for five days, because they're worried that when they return their home will have been invaded by people stealing stuff. So I'm not sure how we, as a community, can wrap our head around that, but somehow I think as a community, we need to, we need to be more diligent and aggressive in making sure that we are all personally protected. So that's something that I'm going to start trying to figure a way to find solution on, and if anyone in the TV land out there has ideas, I am open for conversation. Thank you.
Supervisor Finnegan.
I also had a couple of meetings. As you've heard from the rest of the supervisors, I also participated in the joint Board of Supervisor City Council meeting as the new solid waste board that will take effect, I guess, after their next meeting here in a couple of days. Also had a meeting with the CAO and Animal Control and constituents from Klamath regarding the coverage down there and the processes down there and the policies. Good meeting, and reaffirmed that there is coverage in Klamath for animal control. Had a meeting in Sacramento with the CSAC officers, as well as the full staff of the State Association, and then we rolled that after a couple hours of meeting into a conference call with the entire Board of Supervisors of the state regarding the initiative that's being filed for the constitutional guarantees for the adequate funding for AB 109, which is the corrections portion of realignment, as well as the mental health portion that is soon to materialize. And we did submit that initiative to the Attorney General, and for title and summary, and then it was amended. I think that was done on Monday, and so stay tuned on that. There's quite a coalition that's been built around that with the county sheriffs. I believe that the cities are on board now, if not the League of Cities, definitely the large urban cities in Southern California, as well as the big city mayors, so stay tuned. Had a meeting in Klamath. I went and attended the Klamath Community Services District Board Meeting. A little controversial down there right now, they're going through some changes. Showed up along with the clerk recorder to let them know just some of the legal processes, that they really are a government, that they are elected officials, they can't just do what they feel like, they can't just give that power away, that there is a process, and they're struggling. But any time that you have an elected board that is a fledgling board, knew what they're doing, takes some getting used to, so pledge support there, and I think they're on the right track in their transition. Then also, as Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned, had the airport JPA meeting. We are fast approaching the design phase for the new terminal, and we are on track. Hopefully, the federal, the Congress will also be on track and make sure that we are fully funded in the AIP grants, the Airport Improvement Program grants. Attended the Chamber Mixer at six degrees of celebration, great turnout there, and they've done a fantastic job with that business. And also went to the Coast Guard Auxiliary Dinner that was held at the Veterans Hall this last Saturday. Ten-year anniversary for the Coast Guard Auxiliary, and this started when we talked about having a search and rescue station here, still looking for a small boat station from the Coast Guard. The, with the help of Congressman Thompson, at that time, the Coast Guard came out and said, "Well, look, as a community, you're going to have to embrace this. You need to start showing that there's involvement." And so we said, "Okay, fine, how do we do that?" And the Coast Guard Auxiliary was the way it was done. Mary Messel, Bev Knoll, and a whole slew of people, and I think they probably have 25 now, great, great group, and it was well-attended. And then also had a National Association of Counties conference call with the leadership of the Transportation Steering Committee, which I sit on, I also chair the airport subcommittee of that, and talked about what our goals and missions were going to be and what our targets were going to be for the next year. And of course, if you've been following it at all, transportation is nothing but a bunch of reauthorizations year after year after year with diminishing returns and diminishing revenues. The Highway Trust Fund is underfunded. There's talks of, talk of a gas tax that needs to be increased. The bottom line for California alone, there's a projection that over the next decade, next 10 years, there is going to be a shortfall of $295 to $300 billion just for maintaining the infrastructure, and that's just for freeways, roads, bridges. That's what the deficit we would be left with after the feds ponied up their share as well, so it is not pretty. So how do you talk about jobs when you don't even have the infrastructure? So they can talk about high-speed rail, they can talk about light rail, they can talk about bus and transit systems, but if you don't have the roads to drive them on, there's a problem. So we're going to try to concentrate our efforts, obviously, with the National Association of Counties in Washington, the funding streams, make sure that's adequate, and at least create a sense of awareness with some of the states like California, what can be done. And that was about it.
Thank you. I was hoping you'd be a little longer, so our timeframe, and you usually are good at that, but I'll be brief. This morning, I left my daily planner at home, so I didn't have my notes with me, so from memory, I will try to do some of this. I attended the CMSP, which is County Medical Services Program in Sacramento, since the last meeting, and one of the main topics of discussion was the LIHP, or L-I-H-P is what it is, the Low Income Health Project or Program, Gary, I don't remember the program. It's a pilot program, and it hopefully will help the transition from the system that we have now to the new health care program. That will probably, we may be looking at CMSP and Medi-Cal being combined at some point, so this is kind of looking to see how that will work. And it's also still, I know I mentioned before, medical homes. We don't have a big problem in this community, because we're so small, but in some of the bigger counties, there are many clinics, and there's a real problem with a lot of our homeless people not having a medical home, not having all their records in one place, and they're really working hard at trying to do that to, even if they have to bus these people to the same clinic that they normally, that they could go to instead of just wherever they happen to be, what area they happen to be in that day, so we'd be able to keep track of their, their medical records a little better. We're not having a meeting this, the month of November, because of the holiday, but we will be having an early meeting in December, and that will be my last meeting with CMSP. Those terms are three years. And I can't say that I'll miss having to travel to Sacramento. In the beginning, I thought, "Oh, this is pretty great, you know, get to be in Sacramento and do a little shopping." Well, I never got to go shopping, never got to play tourist. It was day trip down, meeting, day trip back, so I won't be missing that one, and I don't want anything to take its place either. Also had agenda review for this meeting, attended the city-county meeting, and with, I also had constituents talking to me about the problem with all the break-ins and everything, and I think we're going to have to really look at more and more neighborhood watches. We don't have enough force in this community to cover every neighborhood, and we're all going to have to start taking some responsibility ourselves and helping look out for our neighbors. You know, when I was growing up, everybody knew everybody. You knew all your neighbors by name. You know, I, I think we can honestly say, just about everybody in here, you don't know some of your neighbors' names, you don't know who they are, and I do believe that maybe we should start having some neighborhood meetings, get to know each other, let each other know when you're going to be leaving town. Pick up your newspaper for you, so it's not laying, you know, you don't have several, of course, we don't get too many anymore, but laying in the driveway for two or three, four days, you know, try to, to make the home look like somebody's there all the time. Don't leave for work and leave all your blinds closed, and I don't know what all you can do, but I really encourage the neighborhood watches. That's about it for me. I was trying to go on a little longer. I, we've got public comment in just a couple of minutes. Maybe we'll take the consent agenda at this time.
Move to approve.
And no refusing from any item?
I was pretty sure. I did have a question about the, and maybe Debbie can answer this, about the service, the processing, $69 for not being successful and $74 for being successful.
I wondered about that.
I think I'd be, I'd work on being unsuccessful a whole bunch of the time, rather than being successful a small portion of the time. I'm just curious. I know there's a reason for it.
Well, on the unsuccessful service, usually they have to do a little bit more work. We try, we try and provide as best as we can an exact location of where the process server may be able to find the person we need served. Oftentimes, they'll go to the residence a few times, and nobody will be there, they can't get confirmation whether, whether that's their address or not, and so they'll do some research on their own to try and locate maybe a, a place of work that they could serve at or something like that. So there is unsuccessful, they do have to go a little bit further in investigation to try and locate that person.
But is there, is there a requirement on how far they go, or they just decide?
Minimum three attempts is what we've built into the contract. They've done very well. Their percentage of successful service is very good.
Good, thank you.
All right, excuse me, Debbie. I had, had the same question until I realized, too, I was wondering why we were using a company from out of town instead of a local process server, until I read "non-local."
Yes.
So I can understand the, the prices on that also, if it's non-local and they've had to travel here. Whether they get to serve or not, they've spent their time being here and looking.
And it saves us here locally, because if we're trying to locate somebody in New Mexico and serve them, then we have to find out, okay, what's the appropriate agency, private business or, or public authority to do that service for us, and then we have to request a purchase order to get approval to pay them, find out, you know, and there's a lot of work for, I mean, we're all over the United States that we serve people, so it's a lot of work in-house if we didn't go through this company to do it for us.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Okay, Jeremy, I had a motion, did I? A second?
Yes.
Okay, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor McClure.
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan.
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan.
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara.
Yes. And in that consent agenda, we have a proclamation for Veterans Day, and I would like Supervisor Sullivan to read. Pardon me? Oh, I thought somebody said something.
Chair, you need to do public comment on the consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any public comment on the consent agenda, any items on the consent only? Seeing none? Now Supervisor Sullivan.
Resolution 2011 dash zero six three. Whereas November 11th is nationally celebrated as Veterans Day, and whereas millions of veterans throughout the United States have fought for our country, and many of those lost their lives so that we might enjoy the freedom we have today, and whereas veterans deserve the respect and honor that this day only begins to give throughout the year, and whereas activities are planned in the community to celebrate and bravery encourage, the bravery and courage of the veterans who have served both stateside and on the fronts, and whereas the Board of Supervisors would like to acknowledge and honor all veterans for their part in our fight for freedom, and whereas Armistice Day is November 11th and commemorates the armistice signed between the Allies of World War I and Germany at Copenhague, France, for the cessation, secession of hostilities on the Western Front, which took effect on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month of 1918. This official date to mark the end of war reflects the ceasefire on the Western Front. Now, therefore, the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors hereby encourages members of the community to participate in the November 11th, 2011 Veterans Day activities as sponsored by local agencies and veterans organizations, passed and adopted this 8th day of November 2011.
Thank you, Supervisor Sullivan.
I want to thank the board for honoring all the veterans of all the wars. It's certainly appreciated, and, and of course, you know, we have our parade, and they're going to start at 11 o'clock this year instead of 10, so it's going to be 11, 11, 11, 2011. So I know Supervisor Sullivan will have a great array of donuts and coffee for everyone who wants to stop by, and I think Supervisor Hemmingson may do the same if you want to go out to his shop, so. He don't offer you coffee, though, I don't know why. You never offered me coffee when I come out, I guess it's because I'm complaining about the things. But on behalf of the veterans, I want to thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. I'd like to thank you also, Jerry, for being here to accept that. At this time, we will have public comments. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. We have public comments?
Good morning. Bill Renfro with the Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority. This is just a bit of information that you may or may not have heard, but I got an email this morning from the Commissioner for their Workers' Comp Board, and they've announced a 37% increase in workers' compensation starting in January 2012, which is not going to make us any more competitive in terms of trying to recruit businesses into our state. So I'm not sure exactly what the background is on that's a fairly substantial rate increase, so you'll probably hear more about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Pardon me? Oh, I know. Now, the small businessman, that, you know, I think we're just going to see more small businesses close, small contractors that only employ two or three people, you know, when, when the building industry is so slow, yet they've got to keep their licenses going, they still have to pay into that. I don't think people realize that. Those fees still go on whether you're building a house or not, so not good news, Bill.
Yeah, it might be. So I don't know, David, if that's come up at CSAC and all, but I know when, probably about six or seven years ago, Puchigian introduced some legislation that reformed workers' comp and brought the costs down, but when we talked to their chief of staff down there, her comment was, "There's just not enough investigators for workers' comp fraud," and that's one of the things that, that builds the costs up.
Yeah, no, it's, obviously, we tracked the legislation. If it was there, if you can find a champion to introduce it, that's even better.
Okay, thank you. Any more public comment? Sir, did I see you start to come up here? You need to come up to the microphone.
Would it be an opportunity when the climate, when the risk getting?
Yes, yes, if you'd like to hold your comments until then. Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none? We've closed, closed the public comment period. Still have a couple of minutes before our next timed item. Do we have enough time to take item 14?
Sure.
Jay, before, under general government?
Sure.
Approved and authorized to chair to sign an Oregon Department of Transportation grant
Good morning, board. What we have here, we're submitting grant application to ODOT for their Connect Oregon Four program this year. We applied last year, and we received a match to our AIP projects from the program, but no grant for construction. We weren't real well-received, they don't like the idea of Oregon money going to California, so we're a stepchild, so to speak, of this program, but we do qualify, since we serve southwestern Oregon. This year, we've reduced the amount of our requests down to cover our match for the, half the match for the AIP grants for the terminal project. We feel that's as fair and reasonable a request as we can make, and we'll have to come up with the other half of the match from California. Also, this, this year's grant amount overall has been reduced by more than half. Last year, it was $100 million, this year, it's $40 million. So it'll be a lot less money to go around, but basically, what we need here on the application is the chair to sign verifying that the Bakra does have a lease for the airport. So that's what we're asking for today, is permission to authorize your chair to sign the grant application.
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion, in two seconds.
Under discussion. While, I think the grant last year, we asked for about $5 million. This year, we're only asking for about $550,000.
Correct.
So there's probably a much better chance of getting it this year, but something that was pointed out by the Airport Director, Mr. Bernard, is that we were successful in obtaining money from the state of Oregon for a grant for the Airport Authority, so Oregon has chipped in, and so they are a great partner.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, bring it back to the board for any further discussion. Jeremy, we don't need a poll vote on this, do we? All in favor?
Aye.
We do?
No.
You were nodding your head, yes. Any? Any against? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay. About one minute.
Which call?
Yeah, which call? Mine says 10:30. Now we'll just move right on to. I am going to, we're going to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors at this time and reconvene as the Board of Equalization and conduct a public hearing for an assessment appeal, assessors parcel number 115-180-15, Hushnam as requested by the assessor. We have someone from the assessor's office that's addressing it. Is Mrs. Hushnam's not here today?
To give her a few more minutes.
Yeah, because doesn't she usually go first?
That's true.
That's what I thought. Yeah, if you want to wait for just a couple of minutes, see if she's going to come in the door in case. Her clock is different than all of ours. All of ours are all different anyway. Well, I've already opened as the public hearing. Yeah, we'll just go ahead and take a couple minute break. Mrs. Hushnam has been informed that her item was a timed item for 10:30, so we will move on with our portion of it. Oh, I think so.
I'm going to go ahead and swear them in first.
Pardon me?
I'm going to swear them in.
Okay.
Okay. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter now pending before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
Good morning. I guess I'll go ahead and pass out what I have prepared.
Actually, I'm going to jump in. The presumption is that the assessment is correct. If the applicant is not here.
We don't need to go through all this.
Request that the Board of Equalization deny the appeal.
Then do we have any questions from board members regarding this for Jennifer?
I don't think there's any reason to question anything. We just assume that everything stays current. There's nobody here to speak to an appeal.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
That's okay.
It's a really nice package.
Gretchen, do I need public comment on this?
Yes, you do.
I did open the public hearing, didn't I? Yes. So now I will take public comment on this item if anyone has anything. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing.
Nope.
Oh. Now what?
Now you open it up again.
Need to reopen it.
So then we'll have to let her go first. Mrs. Hushnam, we just opened and closed public, the public hearing, but being as how you're in, we'll reopen it. And you have an opportunity to go first. So I will now reopen the public.
Get to show your pockets now.
Yeah, the public hearing and you'll need to be sworn in.
Can you please step up please? Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter now pending before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Okay, you can.
You know, recently we have problem with one of our property taxes, one of our properties. It's a mobile home in half acre commercial land. We used to pay only $700. I have the papers here a year. And then we tried to sell it to some friends, they are from Iran, they were going to get a visa and plant, open a business there to plant exotic flowers and we sold it to him for $150, but the price was included in the acreage and the shops, storages we have in other property. And, but the title company, they said they can't go that complicated, they put it one price. And then our property tax for the last two years, it went up all the way to $2,000 and because I was filed for Board of Supervisor, I thought something going to happen. I didn't pay our taxes, our taxes went all the way with penalty, everything, to $4,200, which I paid it. And now when I disputed, they lowered it to $1,249. But our dispute is, they say the land worth $80,000 and $60,000 and the property worth $25,000, the land worth $125,000. We listed the land with Mike at RE/MAX seven years ago for $37,000. We didn't get any offer. And this year in January, I listed this house with the land, everything, with Century 21. In fact, there isn't, I'm late, I was waiting for Century 21, give me copy of the listing for $85,000 and we didn't get any offer. And we even said we financed it. So I don't know why they were so adamant to charge us to say this house worth $105,000, you know. In fact, my husband told me, don't go there, let's pay. But we are behind in, this year, we didn't pay three of our properties, you know. It's not like we are stingy, we don't want to pay, but you know, with the economy and everything, you know, when they raise one property and we end up paying $4,200, then there are three properties. I paid half, but we couldn't afford to pay the other half. So it's up to you if you lower it down or not, but I had to come because I disputed it.
Okay, is that all you have to say?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Jennifer?
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm going to kind of go through the order of events for, we have two different transfers occurring with this piece of property. The first one occurred when the Hushnams sold it and then they received the property back through another transfer of ownership later that year. So we're going to kind of look at both of those. This is for the property at 639 Elk Valley Road. The front, you can just kind of see it is a manufactured home. It's accessed directly right off of Elk Valley Road. The third page is just kind of the parcel map showing the location. This property is zoned M, manufacturing industrial. And so I'll just go ahead and read the narrative that I've prepared. The manufactured home is 1440 square feet and was built in 1977. The approximate size of the land is .52 acres, 100 by 228 square feet. Document number 2009-1857 was recorded showing an ownership change upon 100% transfer from the Hushnams to Redwood Empire Nursery dated February 25th of 2009. So keep in mind, these appraisals are from two years ago in 2009. Under California Revenue and Taxation Code 61, this document recording is considered a legal change of ownership and thus constitutes reappraisal of the property as of the date of transfer and must be assessed at current market full cash value as of said date. There was a sale price listed of $150,000 for the subject property. I proceeded to conduct my appraisal, starting with a field review of the subject property. The parcel is in an easily accessible area surrounded by other large established commercial industrial businesses and has well-traveled paved access directly from Elk Valley Road. There's a high volume of vehicle and foot traffic stemming from the adjoining neighborhoods and businesses. And taking all that into account, it is my opinion that the subject parcel could easily be utilized under its highest and best use as a parcel used for manufacturing or industrial purposes. I would classify the physical condition of the land as average. It was not terribly overgrown, nor did it have any flooding or access issues. There was some debris around the immediate area of the home appearing to have been produced by the tenants, but nothing that would be extremely costly or time-consuming to cure. It was also observed that the manufactured home was in need of deferred maintenance. And when I asked the tenants on the premises, who did not allow me access to the interior of the home, if there were any circumstances to consider regarding the interior condition of the manufactured home, they stated that there was some mold in the bathroom area and leaking in the kitchen sink and it suffered the effects of wear and tear inside. Judging from the condition of the exterior, I didn't doubt that the interior was in need of some maintenance. Although I was denied access to the home, I took these conditions into consideration during my appraisal. I proceeded to conduct my appraisal in office using cost factors prepared by the State of California. All improvements combined came to a total of $75,166 replacement cost new. I then depreciated all of the improvements by 70%, calling all structures only 30% good. The appraisal handbook prepared by the State of California projected a depreciation of 37%, but I reduced it slightly more due to the needed deferred maintenance. This then gave me a value of $22,549. Allocating from the sale price listed on the change of ownership report, I rounded to $25,000 for the value of the manufactured home and all attached improvements. Looking at the limited sales of comparable sold commercial properties, I felt the allocation of the reported sale price was appropriate. RNT 1101B states that for purposes of determining the full cash value or fair market value of real property being appraised upon a purchase, full cash value or fair market value is the purchase price paid in the transaction unless it is established by a preponderance of evidence that the real property would not have transferred for that purchase price in an open market. The lack of comparable commercial or industrial sales indicated that sale price was the appropriate amount to allocate to the subject property. Therefore, the remaining amount of $125,000 was placed on the land for a total value with improvements of $150,000, which was the sale price for the new owner, Redwood Empire Nursery. The Hushnams regained ownership of this parcel later that same year on recorded document 2009-5609 dated 12/29/09. On this document, the Hushnams reported a sale price of $150. They also recorded a grant deed declaring a documentary transfer tax of $165, which equates to a purchase price of $150,000. This document states that the transfer tax is computed on the consideration or full value of the property conveyed. Due to the reported purchase price and a lack of commercial sales to prove otherwise, as well as the fact that the actual subject property had sold just months before in the same year for the same value, I determined the current assessed value of $150,000 still valid and left this value as the assessed amount. The next page is, just kind of shows the limited commercial sales that we had to work with. In May of '08, which would have been several months prior to their February '09 sale to Redwood Empire Nursery, I had a property that was just across the street from their subject property sell for $135,000 and it was only .13 acres, so we're talking less than half the size and $90,000 was allocated to that commercial lot. And there's no residence on that, it's just a big commercial metal building. And then their sale occurred in February of '09. We used the purchase price allocated after doing cost approach on the improvements, residual on the land. Looking at what we did have, it seemed appropriate and we used sale price. And when they regained it in December, the only other activity as far as comparable sales that we have record of is one from July of '09, just a couple months prior. In between their original sale to Redwood Empire and when they got it back, the sale occurred for $200,000 for an old 600 square foot 1953 structure, again on a parcel that's less than or about half the size of their subject lot.
I'm sorry Jennifer, what was the price on that one?
$200,000. And that's pretty much it. In response to some of the comments Ms. Hushnam made, I know she has concerns about the tax bill having gone up, but that's because of the reappraisal as of market value of 2009.
Also included in your packet are copies of the deeds from the February transfer, as well as the December 2009 transfer, showing that there is just a complete transfer of ownership between Mr. Houshnam and Redwood Empire and back in December. There are some other corrective deeds that were correcting incorrect legal descriptions. The PCORs also support the $150,000 transfer for full price purchase value of the property. So, that's included for your information.
I also have, just looking in the file here, the land base prior to their sale was 1988, so they've owned it for quite some time. The value would have been much different between 1988 and 2009.
Chris? I know Ms. Houshnam asked if she could make a comment. Can she speak again?
This is a very informal proceeding, so if the board wishes to hear from her, that would be totally appropriate to hear.
Okay. You need to come up to the microphone so the recording can be heard, or it can be heard on the recording.
If you read the attachment, the letter dated March 23rd, 2010, it looked like we sold the property and we bought the property, but this is not happened. The person wanted to get a visa, to live, work visa, to live in the United States, and this is, they told us. We did not get the money out of the escrow or anything. It's, I don't know, it's so much confusion. We didn't sell or buy.
My understanding, if there was a transfer of title and deeds and all that, then the transaction went through.
There is a transfer of title.
Yes.
Transfer of ownership.
Yes.
Revenue and Taxations Code would come into play at that point, so.
So, the appeal that we're looking at, are we being asked to look at the basis year 2009 or today's value? What is it that's really being appealed here? Are we to uphold the $150,000 value?
Yeah, if you look at the application, it's for the 2010-11 tax rule, which would have been based on the $150,000 purchase price.
Okay, so we're not asking, that's what I was trying to get clear, are we being asked to change the basis because the value wasn't there, or leave the basis the same and reduce it because the market value has gone down?
I don't believe that this is an appeal application for decline in value for today's market, no.
Perfect, thank you.
Which, I should add, they, I did, they are under our probate program. They, for this tax rule, the value has been reduced because we have had some sales since, so they have been reduced to current market value, but this is for, as of 2009.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, board members? Any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Hearing nothing?
Well, I think I, the last question I asked answered my question, is, was the value established in 2009 as the basis for the property based on the sale and transfer of that property? And all the documentation says yes. If you were asking me, "What do I think it's worth today?", that's a whole different question, and that's not the question that we're being asked.
I agree with Supervisor Finnegan, this was going back. The selling price showed that, you know, it was valued at that at the time, even though Ms. Houshnam says it didn't really sell, but there was transferred title and everything, so according to the assessor's office, it's sold. So, I am hearing nothing from any supervisors to uphold the appeal, so this hearing is over.
Just for clarity's sake now, the applicant can apply for reduced value.
She's already doing it, aren't you?
Yeah, we have already reduced it.
Yeah.
We have reduced it, but they certainly have the option to appeal that value as well if they believe it should be lower.
Okay, and she understands that completely?
I believe so.
Okay.
So, we don't need to take affirmative action of denying the appeal?
I think for clarity of the record, the board should deny the appeal.
Yes.
Okay, then I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Jeremy, I think you should probably pull the vote on it. and adopt ordinance.
Not time, no.
Yeah.
We've got five minutes to waste again, so let's go to, not to waste, excuse that
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
expression.
Yes.
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
We will move on to legislative and budget issues.
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Item number 16.
I don't have a lot on the legislative and budget issues at this point, but there's obviously, pension reform is being discussed considerably at the state level. The governor has come out with his plan, coalition has come out with their plan. That plan obviously has some issues that looks to be very, would be very difficult financially for the counties, especially small counties. We'll continue to monitor it. I believe there will be something that will come out that'll be more reasonable than that one, but that one right now would be something that we, I don't think we could support, but that could end up as a ballot initiative or something. The governor's has different types of impacts. We've talked about that one often on now for several months, and is more realistic than the one from the coalition. Do you want to go over capital projects while we're here?
Sure.
The townsite boat ramp is finishing up. Majority of the construction is done, we're down to paving and striping and some debris removal. There's been discussions between our construction manager or Stover Engineering regarding the debris removal and the water quality certification with the Rock Tribe, so they'll continue to have those discussions. There are a couple of options on the table of moving that to another site before the closeout of the project. Obviously, this time of year, it's difficult to pave and stripe and finish up a project, but they will be attempting to get that all done also, and then ultimately, we'll have a ribbon cutting and get another ramp ready to go. It'll be open at that point. Battery Point, the bid closing had to be extended. There were some issues that did come up during the mandatory walkthrough. When you have a 150-year-old structure, there will be questions, and so the questions are being answered. Extended to 12/1, and we'll start the bid process, it's a 30-day process. I expect to get several contractors bidding on that, so that'll be good too, so there's some competition. And those are the primary projects right now. We're dealing with some issues with Prop 40 projects, but we'll be making, having those discussions and finish that up hopefully over the winter.
Thank you, Jay. My watch says 11 o'clock. I think everybody else's does too, it's just that clock. We've requested a new clock, so we won't have this problem hopefully in the future. So, we will move on to item number four, hold a public hearing, wait full reading, and adopt ordinance 2011-007, an ordinance of the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors Regarding Industrial Waste Pretreatment, to revise chapters 15.28, 15.32, and 15.12 of the Del Norte County Code related to wastewater. I will open the public hearing at this time. Mr. Hamlin?
Just as a reminder, this is a requirement of the Water Quality Control Board in reviewing the permits for Del Norte County and for the city of Crescent City. They found that we have a multi-jurisdiction system, and so we've amended that so that our regulations match those of Crescent City, and it indicates in there who is in charge of the permit system, and so this is much kind of a cleanup ordinance so that our pollutant, or our wastewater elimination system can be permitted by the Regional Water Quality Control Board.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I...
Close the public hearing.
Pardon me?
Close the public hearing.
I'm going to. We'll close the public hearing at this time. And Jeremy, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to item number four, hold a public hearing, wait full reading, and adopt ordinance 2011-007, an ordinance of the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors Regarding Industrial Waste Pretreatment, to revise chapters 15.28, 15.32, and 15.12 of the Del Norte County Code related to wastewater. I will open the public hearing at this time. Mr. Hamlin?
Just as a reminder, this is a requirement of the Water Quality Control Board in reviewing the permits for Del Norte County and for the city of Crescent City. They found that we have a multi-jurisdiction system, and so we've amended that so that our regulations match those of Crescent City, and it indicates in there who is in charge of the permit system, and so this is much kind of a cleanup ordinance so that our pollutant, or our wastewater elimination system can be permitted by the Regional Water Quality Control Board.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I...
Close the public hearing.
Pardon me?
Close the public hearing.
I'm going to. We'll close the public hearing at this time. And Jeremy, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Okay, we will, I think we just have one item left, item 15, presentation by the Reseguini Rancheria regarding the Klamath Hydroelectric Project Dam Removal Process.
My name is Sunshine Watkins. I'm the treasurer of the Business Council for Reseguini Rancheria. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. We are excluded from Klamath discussions, or Klamath settlement discussions, and our rights to protect our fisheries and water quality will be terminated by the Secretary of Interior if he makes affirmative decision on dam removal, KBR Act 15.3.9. And the Klamath Basin Restoration Agreement is like feeding our people poison with the side of dam removal. It terminates native rights, excuse me, it terminates native rights of the river. It does not secure enough water flow for the salmon. It does not cure water pollution problems and does not restore enough marshes and lakes for the upper Klamath basin to restore suckerfish, which they have completely lost. We favor speedy dam removal, but not through the secretarial decision and KHSA. We are working through the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission process and with the California State Water Resources Control Board instead. Under the 401 certification process, the state will force dam removal because this will block issuance of a license. This is because pollution from the Klamath hydroelectric power reservoirs can't be stopped unless dams are removed. Our people have never seen anything like the September 2002 fish kill, or the fish disease epidemic killing the salmon, the young salmon. If we want our fish to survive into the future, we think dams need to be removed before 2020 to stop toxic algae problems immediately and allow the fish to survive well, as well as our culture. And harmony in the Klamath basin can only come through ecological restoration, which the current governance process does not attempt. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Patrick Higgins, and I have been retained as a fisheries consultant to the Reseguini Rancheria to help them with the environmental impact statement review, and I actually have a copy.
For each of us?
Yeah, we need each like one of us.
Can I thumb through that?
I think I have that much paper up in my office on all this.
This is 1,880 pages, and then 1,000 pages in appendices, and it's very, very flawed. It's actually a waste of about $6 million, and because of its deficiencies, is very, very vulnerable to legal challenge. I'm going to use our letter of request, I want to really thank you guys for putting this on your calendar, kind of as an outline, so I'll go, and then I have some things to share with the board as background information, because I think we're only getting started here. You guys have been boxed out of Klamath discussion since 2006, and as the legislation stalls that would enact the Klamath Basin Restoration Agreement, we will be back at the table, and I hope that we get a more socially and ecologically just outcome. So, you guys were not allowed to participate in the KBR. It was a question of political balance. I think that in previous discussions before your board, that that was validated. That is not the precedent. You guys have participated on the Klamath Task Force. Virginia Boss did a wonderful job for years representing both recreational fishermen and the county. You guys participated on the Klamath Basin Management Council, and yet for 50 years going forward, because you're not party to this deal, which you didn't negotiate and which is not a good one, then you won't be invited to the table. And neither will federally recognized tribes, Reseguini Rancheria, Quartz Valley Indian Community, and the Hoopa Tribe, which has the largest real estate of any tribe in California. And I have for the record here, and for you guys to share, these are the comments of the Hoopa Tribe on the currently pending legislation offered by Senator Merkley of Oregon. And their view, and that of the Reseguini Rancheria, is that this is essentially equivalent to termination of their rights on the river.
Now, you've got notes on the back of one sheet here. Patrick?
Excuse me.
You've got some notes on the back.
That's typical, I'm sorry. I'll get you a better one, I've got more. But essentially, the Hoopa won 50% of the flow back in the Trinity River back in about 1988. They put Steven Soggi de Lawyer on it, and the Department of Interior, without an argument, basically went from 10% flows to 50%. That's been a tremendous benefit to Del Norte County, and to the Reseguini Rancheria, and all sport fishermen, and people who love to fish the Klamath River, and millions do. Those rights would be lost on the Klamath, to the Reseguini, to the Quartz Valley Indian Community, to the Hoopa Tribe. The Secretary of Interior will just say, "We're not defending your rights anymore." And the way these tribes view that is that that actually will be a priority then for water delivery, as opposed to trust rights and treaty responsibilities. So, that's something for you to consider in terms of social justice. The DEIS, DEIR, draft environmental impact statement and environmental impact reports, supposed to basically put them in sync with National Environmental Policy Act and the California Environmental Quality Act, it doesn't. This is one page, save you 2,778 pages of reading, and on the back, you can see, there was a FERC process, and the FERC process has been truncated. And then there were negotiations from which you were excluded, and they came out with a product, which essentially now is like, "You'll like this, but you have to eat the whole thing." And if that stalls, then we'll be back at the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and also back at the California State Water Board, a Clean Water Act permit. So, just quickly, I'd like to touch on why these deals are insufficient scientifically, which is actually my greatest area of expertise. So, here's Upper Klamath Lake, and if you can see this photo, it looks like split pea soup. And historically, it was actually tea-colored, had giant suckerfish that lived to be 40 years old, huge trout, and today, it's got almost no life seasonally. There's a reach of the river right below Upper Klamath Lake called the Kino Reservoir, and it's depicted here in the middle. It's farmed right up to the edge. It has wastewater from the Lost River, and Tulley Lake, and Lower Klamath Lake, and it has the wasteload from Upper Klamath Lake, and it has no oxygen for five to 10 weeks a year. Science panel was convened. Science panel was convened. Salmon will not jump through here. They could spend $500 million bucks, and the pollution will persist because they're not attacking the pollution problem at the source. This is what it looks like coming out of Iron Gate Reservoir right now. The brown and foamy is pollution. That pollution then sets up alge beds downstream, and those alge beds are actually a place where the intermediate host for fish diseases live. So the water quality associated with this pollution and combination with the prevalence of disease organisms is killing hundreds, hundreds of thousands of juvenile salmon a year. This is equivalent in impacts to subsequent runs to the September 2002 fish kill. That extraordinary green color in the far photo is of Iron Gate Reservoir in a cove, and that is the condition that has evolved in Iron Gate and Copco reservoirs. They have not only nitrogen fixing algae in their surface waters that feed the Lower Klamath, but also toxic algae now. So for months of the year, including in the eddies, all the way down to Del Norte County, there is toxic algae, and in some years, the whole river turns green. And this is what it looks like at the end of the chain in the Lost River and Tulie Lake, which used to be a sink not connected to the clam. Now this is just pumped into the clam. And so it's causing fish disease problems downstream, but it's causing mortality of anything in this particular reach. And unfortunately, the nutrient problems in the upper basin are unaddressed. One more, getting quick. The Klamath is actually a system, it's 10,000 square miles. It's a system of linked ecosystems. And if you look at the Trinity ecosystem, it's in good shape. We've got 50% of the water back. They mimic natural flows, and the runs have been consistent and high. The mainstem Klamath and the Salmon River coming out of national forest lands, it has similar water quality and the benefit of lots of undisturbed land. But the fish from the salmon sometimes can't make it downstream because the mainstem Klamath is so nutrient rich, it sets up stress and disease. And so in the lower Klamath, we've actually had a fish kill, first time in 10,000 years. The conditions that will be allowed under the deal and the KBR, I believe, will cause continuing loss of juvenile fish and problems with additional adult fish kills in future droughts. And this is the Scott River, 2009. That's not legal under 5937 of cowfishing game codes. It's dry. That's the Shasta River in 2009 at 16 cubic feet per second. It's not fish habitat. It's not suitable for recreational contact. This is a problem. These are cylinders, major cylinders in the Klamath. So then, then we have the Upper Klamath, and essentially, spring waters come into it and rejuvenate it. But if you have too much coming from farm country in the upper basin, then the river can't basically create the clean water conditions that the fish need. And this is a graphic of Upper Klamath Lake, and it shows where there's no dissolved oxygen and almost, and enough, you know, depression to kill trout almost throughout the whole lake. This used to be a bass and marsh Tulie Lake. Now it's a salmon, and it will be for 50 years. So, wrapping it up, I've never done a presentation. Thanks for indulgence. There's three things that we'd like you to do or to consider: to comment on the EIS/IR, to at least object to the fact that you were disenfranchised in terms of your ability to frame the deal. They should have left option aid, alternative aid in, which was to take the dams out, but to not implement the KBR. As it is, the government does not analyze the cumulative effects of the KBR in the document despite the fact that they admit it's a connected action. That means under SEQUA and NEPA, this could be challenged legally. But that will not likely be necessary because the legislation is not going anywhere. And if the secretary's decision goes forward without authorizing legislation in a budget, it's moot. So by next April, there'll be a need for new legislation, and I hope that you will join the Reseguini and others in requesting a more ecological approach. And the way that this deal was crafted with $100 million in power subsidy, it actually allows economic enterprises in the upper basin that have enjoyed the cheapest power rates in Oregon to, instead of going into a competitive market position and probably shrinking the footprint of agriculture, increasing water storage, decreasing nutrient flow, we're not going to prop them up for $100 million bucks in the face of climate change for 50 years. It's not economically sound, and it's pushing a rock uphill. If they shrink the footprint of ag, then, and we're not talking about going back to, you know, original conditions, just they've taken 80% of the Martian lakes, and the expert panels convened by this program actually point out that you need to give more marsh back and basically have more water storage. And they're trying to do technical fixes, which are not going to work, be tremendously expensive. And now, actually, the document is fundamentally flawed, but if the legislation doesn't pass, there'll be no need to challenge it. The Reseguini have been before the State Water Resources Control Board, and this is the second ask, join us in requesting the State Water Resources Control Board to re-activate the 401, which is their water quality authority over dam relicensing, so that the toxic algae reservoirs can be removed. Through several years of comments, they've pointed out that you can't fix the reservoir pollution problems without the removal. And so it actually appears that the KBR is stalling dam removal, and you guys should join in asking the state of California to abate these nuisances. And then, I think I'm repeating myself, to help us seek legislation that would be ecologically sound and also socially just and economically more beneficial for you guys. Because I, they look at the average of everything, so they've got all these charts, and they say, "It's going to be okay on average, but on the fourth year of a drought, when they run the river lower than it's ever run all winter long, and they don't have enough water to flush the algae, and then the algae continues to grow, and they're on half the water or about 60% of the water that spawned the fish kill in 2002," it's not going to be a good scenario. I just, and I, group think is a funny thing. And so I think that there's a lot of mistakes that were made here, and we'll be better off if you guys help us seek an alternative. And I guess we'll respond to questions. And here's the 401 request from the Reseguini to the State Water Board.
Even, is that, yeah.
Can I ask you a question since you brought it up in your level of expertise regarding the Trinity? Those dams on the Trinity, but you don't have the same issues. Why is that? Because of the non-pollutant above the dam?
Yeah, the mountains above Trinity Reservoir are granite, and so they are nutrient poor. And so the water is beautifully clear. The waters above Upper Klamath Lake come out of volcanic terrain, and they have phosphorus. So that tends to foster algae growth, and the back, the blue-green algae that's now come into Upper Klamath Lake also pulls nitrogen out of the atmosphere, and we breathe 80% nitrogen. So you have a cocktail here. If you don't surround Upper Klamath Lake again with the marshes and make it tea colored so that it basically suppresses the algae, then you can't, you know, they're thinking about harvesting the algae at the outlet of Upper Klamath Lake instead of trying to solve the problem ecologically. So there's, and the other thing about the Trinity Reservoir is it's super deep, and because the water's so pure, it also has good dissolved oxygen levels at depth. You can't let the water out of Iron Gate Reservoir at depth because there's no dissolved oxygen under 10 feet. So the surface water is the only thing that maintains dissolved oxygen, and yet that's where all these algae blooms are. So there's a way that these dams are constructed that is fundamentally different. And on the Trinity side, you can take cold, clean water from the bottom, and it's been the salvation of the Trinity. On the Klamath side, there's no ability to do that because of both the nutrients that come into the system and the characteristics of the reservoirs.
So the KBR, that management process, does it include the Trinity?
The Hoopa, you'll find, thinks that it does include the Trinity, and they're thinking about taking the money from the Trinity and reprogramming it to the Klamath side. And the Hoopa point out that that would be a detriment to the Reseguini and others who share the bounty at the mouth of the Klamath. So the, and no, their plan doesn't include the Trinity. It doesn't include the Shasta and Scott, and it doesn't include ironically and amazingly the Tulie Lake and Lower, Lost River and Lower Klamath Lake systems, which actually have all of their pollutants pumped into the Kino Reservoir. And they're saying, "But they're not part of the system, and we'll give you another environmental process on that later." That's called piecemealing. And it's not legal.
I was surprised, as much as I've been following this, that the Hoopa Valley Tribe was not included in the negotiations either.
Well, actually, the Hoopa were included, and they went all the way down to the end. But then when they saw 15 point, well, it's different numbers, but it's under 15.3. And the Klamath Tribes, the Keruk Tribe and the Urok Tribe have all essentially said that if this is fully funded and authorized, we will not challenge water use in the upper basin for 50 years. And the Secretary of Interior under 15.3.9 does the same thing for other tribes without their consent, and this puts them at odds with the National Congress of American Indians and the affiliated tribes of the Northwest, which say, "No legislation should take tribes' water or fishing rights away without their consent."
Okay.
Martha knows. Don't get me started, tell you everything I know. But I intend to be an assistant to anybody that you put on this. I mean, you know, this is a pretty technical exercise, and you need to have a good foundation. And so if you are bringing staff up to speed, they can rely on me at any time.
I do have a couple of questions because it's where I get stymied on this, because I understand the argument that you can't fix part of it and then sit for 50 years and it not be fixed. But it seems that politically, that that's the, that's the nose under the camel's tent as far as getting the dams out of there. So that's where I get confused, because I think everybody wants the dams gone, but we're in disagreement, or that the argument then is that the current plan doesn't go far enough to reach the actual problem algae. And that problem algae will continue to bloom and continue to wash downstream. And I'm not as, I'm not as convinced that the, that the 2020, because to me, that might be a reachable timeline, just because I don't think...
Governor, move slow.
There's not a lot of expertise in what happens when you remove that many dams off of a river that's been so degraded with, with the dams. So I get, I get confused on the, on the argument because the prize is that we know we want to get rid of the dams. And I understand that the, the argument is, is that the restoration doesn't reach far enough. But do we take, do we take the, the risk of losing the ability to get rid of the dams if we challenge that restoration project?
You've been in the game here. Those are the arguments that are on the table. I would contend that the Klamath Basin Restoration Agreement was somewhat forced on the parties and that, actually, there's a really good news recount of a meeting in West Virginia where the Bush administration came together back in early 2006, and they had originally taken a no removal position, which dam removal advocates saw as a huge obstruction. And so, but their, their requirement was that the farm and ranch community of the Upper Klamath be given security. And that security is in the form of $100 million in subsidies, which puts them under the cost of their neighboring farmers by on the order of five to 10 times. It's bred a huge amount of mistrust and animosity in farm country of the upper basin. And in fact, the, the validation now of both the states and the Fed and this huge document that essentially suggests that it's relatively benign to take these dams out, I think it'd be hard for them to reverse course if this, this process actually dies. And it is, it is really dying on the vine right now. And so back to FERC, even though FERC has never taken out a dam, okay? Never said, "Okay, take that dam out. We don't like it." They always say, "Well, it has these problems." And if you read the FERC EIS, it's really good. It says the fish disease problem won't go away, it'll just move. I had basically seeded all the scientific arguments that were put in the record, and I put those in there, go out with others. And so, but they said, "But we need the power." But part of the FERC process is National Marine Fish Service can set the bar in terms of like what it has to do for fish. They set fish ladders. You know what that costs? And it'd be a very useless exercise, but it would cost $230 million. So at that rate, that would be the most expensive power in Oregon. And if they didn't subsidize it, it would lose $20 million a year. And so at that point, Pacific Corps will look at it, the Oregon PUC will say, "We're not doing that." And they'll have to abandon and decommission at their cost. Will the states still participate? Will we give a golden parachute to a longtime operating corporation that's made hundreds of millions of dollars over decades? Probably. But will they move towards decommissioning and abandonment? No doubt in my mind. And then the 401 certification in the Power Act, it says there is an access to the Clean Water Act. And if the state says that the pollution from the reservoirs can't be cleaned up without their removal, they cannot and will not issue a 401 certification, in which case Pacific Corps can't get a license, abandon, decommission at their expense, or negotiate. The Condit Dam on the White Salmon River on October 26th came out. Settlement had nothing to do with water rights, nothing to do with fishing rights. The LWI dams, right in the middle of Indian Country and Washington, nothing to do with water rights, nothing to do with fishing rights. So these have been conflated artificially. And I heard a former staffer for the Klamath River Keeper say that the Klamath Basin Restoration Agreement has too much in it that too many people object to too strongly, and it's likely to therefore be legally challenged, unless it's moot because it doesn't have authorizing legislation. And she suggested that, you know, the alternative aid, remove the dams and work on the issues of the KBR separately and scrap it, would be the best outcome. And that's a person that was like in the room and no longer constrained. There's a great deal of like, "Get in line on this. This is very robust politically and not always pretty in the way that manifests." You got me in between the lines. Any other questions?
I, you know, I've kind of said from the start that this was kind of a follow the money kind of deal. You know, I'm certainly not in favor of this particular plan, at least what I've read of it. But I am concerned about the removal of the dams, that the plan is not to remove all the dams. And I'd like to know why, if you're going to put a plan in there and you want a free-flowing river from start to finish, why they've excluded a couple of the dams in, in the removal. And if you've got a plan, do you have an all-encompassing plan to repair this without, without everybody getting their fingers in it and everybody wanting a piece of this and a piece of that?
Yeah, I'm not driving the bus, but I think I understand ecologically how that we could make it functional, and I understand what kind of political compromises that would entail. But, you know, that would, let me go back to your question of, of why aren't all six dams coming out? Because that was my position originally. The upper dam actually controls the elevation of Upper Klamath Lake. And since they blew up a reef there so that they could lower the lake to then farm the perimeter, you need to have some control of the outlet because it otherwise would be much lower than it was historically because of the removal of the reef. The government will take that dam over. It will no longer produce power. So then, the second dam they're going to retain is the Kino Reservoir. And this is 20 miles downstream, and it is a huge problem. I mean, this like, this is the place that goes without oxygen. I don't know of another water body that does that for five to 10 weeks a year. The federal government will take it over. Pacific Corps will walk away. And, but it can't be removed if you want full flexibility on water delivery through the A Canal, which is above the town of Klamath Falls and right at the outlet of Upper Klamath Lake. When they run their diversion up to 300 CFS to pump the water into the Klamath project and the Lost River and Tulie Lake, they run the river flow down to like 100 CFS or less. And so then essentially, below Kino, it would be going up and down like a yo-yo unless they retain Kino. The problem is, Kino now is a ditch. It's farmed right up next to it. It, part of the problem with its ecological function... Part of the problem with its ecological function is it used to be a marsh which sucks up all the nutrients, creates cool water. So they're going to have to take some of the farms back away from the edges in Kino to create a marsh, because, you know, it's kind of complicated the way it works, but it's kind of simple in terms of its outcome. If you have intact marshes and better water storage, the clean water produces itself with gravity. And if you try to do this, like back-engineer it by saying, "We're going to maintain all of these farms and we'll pump as much water as needed," or run a strainer on Upper Klamath Lake's outfall, or get a sewage treatment plant for the straight strain where they bring the water back, you know, that's Sisyphus pushing the rock uphill. You know, it's just like, and it's not economically affordable. And of course, in Congress, Wally Herger, seventy-nine to twenty-one, Board of Supervisors in, or no, that's the citizens of Delano County voted to retain the dams. The federal process has been so, I think it's because the federal process has been dishonest, that everybody up there doesn't trust it at all. And so they've started to kind of stray from what I consider a good science basis. But then, so Wally Herger can't touch that. He's the hometown congressman, the thing is in his district. And the second thing is, McClintock at Water and Power, the chairman of the committee, also from California, says he likes the dams, and he pulled the funding this year, and Interior had to scramble to reprogram, even to just get this thick as brick thing on the street. So welcome to the reality of what's going on with the Klamath. I look forward to your constructive engagement to save this magnificent river, because it still has the best chances in the Western US of restoration. And I would, Gary, I think that the economic pressures, these guys got a power subsidy in nineteen seventeen. It was flipped over in nineteen fifty-six. It's like fractions of a cent a kilowatt hour. And, you know, you just go across the fence off the Klamath Project, and the other guys are playing full boat. And so, that's propping ag up at a non-sustainable level. It rained three inches in Klamath Falls in 2001. That's like climate change is here. So what do you do? Do you kind of shrink the footprint in order to accommodate for climate change and make it so that the water demand is more achievable? Or do you subsidize it and program technical fixes with government money to try to do something that's completely untested and unscientific?
Any other questions?
And I'm going to fish the smith today, so.
Is it wrong?
You guys have a jewel there.
No, I said before, I mean, when we originally not, did not vote to support the KBRA and the agreements, it's flawed. It doesn't answer the questions, it doesn't solve the problem, and it's a money grab. And I think it's wrong, that's not the purpose behind doing it. I think the fact that we've already had our power bills go up to subsidize this future removal type of thing with no representation is wrong. That should be a point that people of Delano County and the sovereign tribes of Delano County should have a say in the matter, and that hasn't been the case.
Thank you, Mike.
My confusion from the start has always been, whose science do you believe? Everybody has their own.
Looks like they took every hostage in the room, said, "Sign this with a gunpoint." And then as everyone left the room, they're like, "Oh, wait a second, I don't want to sign that."
Well, Leslie, what's interesting is that these guys hired the smartest guys in the room, National Academy of Science caliber scientists, about fifteen of them for two studies. One was called the Chinook Expert Panel, and the other was the Cohost Steelhead Expert Panel. They both said, "In large, ecologically troubled situations like this, you can't beat it without reducing nutrients." And the Chinook Panel experts said, "You should put forty thousand acres back in swamp and lake. There's national wildlife refuges that could contribute half of that. It's the only place in the nation that they're industrially farmed. Not some wheat for ducks, but potatoes, row crops, heavy-duty pesticides, highest pesticide use in Siskiyou County. On the Lower Klamath and Tulley Lake refuges, and Teddy Roosevelt tried to save Lower Klamath Lake in nineteen oh eight. It used to fill up with Klamath water. You could ride a ferryboat fifty-two miles to a railroad head, and it would fill the Klamath with filtered water from this giant lake through July. Now the Klamath peaks in April, May, drops like a rock, and has huge problems." And they said, "Why didn't you think about filling that up?" Because they were not allowed. So the science in this question was only back-engineered to kind of rationalize the conclusion. And if you look at klamather.org, Ecological Restoration, or Emergency Room, whichever helps you remember, klamather.org, the science is simplified, and it has a remarkable parallel to the harmony-based culture of the Native American tribes. And that was like, when I listened to the guy at FERC Kirians in 2006, he said, "God didn't put lakes here, so therefore, you're going to have problems unless you remove them." And the reverse is true, and that is, Lower Klamath Lake was the water purification and water storage system, most of it's a national wildlife refuge. How come we can't consider getting that back as part of a functional Klamath? And the sky would be black with ducks, and you guys would be happy to share in the ecotourism that could be developed if both the fisheries and the wildlife were given a little more favor. And they're kind of in a desperate condition. I think they're fearful of change, and so I don't know how we'll resolve this, but I think that you guys coming back into the picture as a voice might help.
Coming back into the picture?
Hmm?
I don't think we were ever in it.
Well, yeah, we were.
Well, I mean, back in the eighties and nineties.
Well, even in the early 2000s. I mean, I sat in the Klamath Basin Fisheries Task Force too, and the last time I, meeting I went, and I got off it and dumped all the boxes on junk.
Yep.
And I got it from Duval.
It wasn't perfect, but it went off the rails after that.
Well, I'll tell you what the problem is, and I think you've got the same problem today, only on a different level, is that after listening to a half hour, or excuse me, half a day worth of speeches, all of the environmentalists and all of the worker bees and all of the scientists started spouting political philosophy. And all the politicians in the room started spouting environmental and good science. And I took a step back, and after listening to this for about four hours, I said, "I know what the problem is. You all don't know who the hell you are, who you represent. You got the politicians are spouting science, and the scientists are making policy. You don't know what your own job is."
Well, and you know, it's kind of a setup, David. The expert panels put out perfectly clear information, and none of their arguments were refuted by government scientists, and yet the government scientists had to follow their reports up with a document that said, "We think it'll probably work." And it's based on a false hope and not on a sound scientific basis. So I actually feel for some of my friends that are working for the agencies, because they have better scientific capacity than they're allowed sometimes to demonstrate.
Nice presentation, by the way.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Is there any public comment on this presentation? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, are we going to do anything?
I wanted to get an opportunity for these guys to comment first, if any of them wanted to comment, the tribe people.
Okay, I didn't see anyone else volunteering, so.
Oh, sorry. You went too fast for her.
Okay.
I'm a little slow today, I guess, maybe. My name is Felice Pace, I live in Klamath Glen, and I also own a home over in Scott Valley, where I lived for thirty-five years, been down here about eight, and I've been a Klamath River activist since nineteen eighty-six. And, you know, I'd like the opportunity to support Mr. Hemmingson there, follow the money. And once an administrative law judge actually decided in the FERC process that the fish ladders had to go in, the game was over, and the company recognized it. And it's a business decision, so since then, it's been, you know, who pays which? Well, ratepayers, we're still going to pay. You know, that's the way it goes. But it's been what else would get on that train, and whether the company would get out of all liability and stuff like that. So I think you're absolutely correct there. So what you've heard today, and it's, there's unlikely to be legislation because McClintock and other people can block it, and they want to. That means no secretarial determination. But what might happen is delay then, is, and I'm starting to hear this from some of the parties to these agreements, who I've worked with for many years prior to parting ways from them. But they may try to do this in some other ways, try to get legislation next year. That means the dams stay in, that means the water quality problems don't get fixed. So I hope, you know, you recognize that that needs to be, that'll need to be addressed. We need a way forward. It needs to be resolved one way or another. Some of you think the dams ought to stay in, some of you probably think the dams ought to come out, or probably each way. I don't know where you each stand individually, except for Martha stated it. But either way, you know, let's get back into FERC and resolve the process. That's the process that we have under law for resolving these things, not special deals that have to go through Congress because of certain things that are in them. And not just the money, but other things that are in them. So let's get back, and let's address the promoters who are likely to delay because of this group mind thing, you know, that we developed on the Klamath, and I was there since nineteen eighty-six in the back of the room, you know, because the environmentalists didn't have a chair. You know, we had to wait for public comment to do our pontificating. But anyway, so will you support Hoopa, the Resigini Rancheria, the Quartz Valley, the Resigini Rancheria, Quartz Valley Indian Reservation, Water Watch, Friends of the River, Epic, and others? You know, we're really split on this thing, all our communities, with our efforts to get the dams out via FERC. And the reason we want to do it via FERC is it's going to be quicker, as it turns out, because of this, the way it was politicized. It's become politicized. And, okay. You know, one thing I wanted to mention real quick, because this red light came on, is that racism in this process, especially the hearings on the DEIS, racism has come out of the closet. Up in the Upper Basin, there was a statement made in the public hearing that we ought to send the Indians back to Oklahoma. There's other things have been said. In Siskiyou County, it's getting nasty. And unfortunately, some of that nastiness our sheriff has associated himself with, which, you know, concerns me greatly. So I ask you to stand against that too, wherever racism comes and raises its head. And you might want to establish a Klamath Policy Committee, because stuff's going to be happening here, and, you know, you've got people that, several of you that have a lot of, have done a lot of study and a lot of work on this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I followed the process for KABR for a while, and went through watching different environmental groups that started out at the table and other people. And every time they suggested that, "Oh, we should treat the refuges better, and the water quality issues aren't being addressed adequately." Well, they were just sent home. This was, you know, this, it wasn't an open process, and they weren't invited back to the meetings. And when anyone kind of asked for something that our cultural interests wanted to deny. And so, you do have a weak KABR. And it's not something any of us would, you know, desire if we had our choice. And there's all these conflicts that, will it be funded properly? And will it fail because there's no clear drought issues being addressed? And so, I say that it's our insurance policy that our dams come out, irregardless of what happens with this EIR process. And it's so many pitfalls. I say, "Make sure you are insured. Make sure water quality takes up the path of addressing, you know, the impacts and not allowing the power company to get away with, you know, polluting us anymore. And this is your insurance policy. Make a strong statement, the dams need to come out, and water quality needs to do the job, irregardless of what happens in the future with KABR." They just should be doing their job to make sure our river is clean. Period.
Thank you, Adam. Any other public comment?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So has the FERC process just been stayed? Or are they still actively, is that, is the licensing to Pacific Corps, is that still moving forward? Or the decommissioning, or the bidding a new license? Where is that with FERC?
FERC's final environmental impact statement was issued in July 2007. And as I stated, it concurred with our arguments in terms of problems with nutrient pollution and problems from the reservoirs. But it also concluded that the dam should remain in terms of its preferred alternative. So then, that process was actually stalled, because in 2005, Pacific Corps went into settlement discussions, and in 2006, although Pacific Corps stepped aside and the KBRA was crafted by others other than Pacific Corps, that kind of stalled the FERC process. And then when Pacific Corps signed first an agreement in principle, and then the Klamath Hydro Settlement Agreement in 2010, that officially stalled the 401 certification for California. So the two things that haven't happened in the FERC process, because it was sidetracked by settlement, and there's, the settlement stuff is very liberal, and so they could be in settlement and operate year to year for fifty years. But the problem is, is that the 401 was put off track, and if that reinitiates, then that's kind of, that'll be the official signal that FERC's wheels are then grinding slowly forward. And the Hoopa have petitioned for, the Resigini have petitioned for, to kick their process back on, and that might be an appropriate action for you guys to consider.
And when are those petitions being heard? Is it Klamath?
Well, FERC has, you know, thousands of dams, and many are twenty to thirty years, year to year, so you have to squeak a little bit to get any attention, because they're just a big mill. But I think of all, you know, of the tribes, and in a county, you know, and growing voices are saying, "Come on now, this relicensing process is stalled." And if you look at the, what kills a KBRA and KHSA termination language, legislation not timely enacted. And the State Water Board letter that we basically copied you guys on, they said, "May 11th of this year, 2011, they were going to kick the 401 back on." And Charlie Hoppin, the board chair, said, "We feel like we're being played for suckers, and if there's no legislation in April 2012, don't come back and ask me, staff, are we going forward with the 401? Bring me a budget, bring me a timeline, and let's just kick it off." So that's, this is real. This is real.
Do you think this may, the 401 might-
I think the 401 is real. And I think essentially, they had to put a muzzle on their staff and basically switch staff, because they were so adamant and so incisive with their arguments, that they built a box for Pacific Corps. That's why Pacific Corps scrambled into settlement, was because, and if you read, if you go to klamather.org, you can read Brock Bank, their vice president's comments on why Pacific Corps jumped into settlement. And it says it all. This is built around their needs, and those are the water users.
I just have one thing. Is there a Plan B if these things do get stalled up? And is there a way of controlling the toxic algae? Is there a way of dealing with these things interim, you know, until something gets going? This thing could get dragged out, but, you know, I think there's-
Well, interestingly, Jerry, the, those who are proponents of the deal offer the Endangered Species Act as kind of our emergency brake for making sure that the river doesn't get too little flow, or the suckers don't get their habitat dried up. And it's truly ironic, because there's provisions in the KBRA that contradict ESA, and if Congress told the agencies, "You will now implement this program," there's some question, some serious legal question as to whether or not even the ESA firewall would still be in place in the Klamath. And the Quartz Valley Indian Community asked me an interesting question yesterday. They said, "If they remove the dams, and there's still pollution problems that are killing the fish, who's going to pay us?" You know? And, you know, so it's like, no one's going to pay you. You know, and I think part of what happened here is that the Urok tribe lost in court on the September 2002 fish kill. The science was very conclusive. The water over the riffles was too shallow. The water over the riffles was too shallow. The water was too warm. The fish got bunched up like too many fish in a fishbowl and they died of diseases that are in your fishbowl, Colmarus and Ick, very common. And yet the Uroch lost in court and lost on appeal against the Bureau. And so they felt they really needed to make a deal of any kind because their water rights weren't worth much. Now, the Hoopa getting fifty percent of the flow back in the Trinity, they have a little different view of their water rights and their value.
Very interesting.
Thanks so much for this quality time. It makes me very optimistic.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I will bring it back.
So what kind of timeframe are we looking at in terms of, on the EIR and EIS? What, what, what kind of timeframe are we looking for response?
November twenty-one. And I'd be happy to, uh, help your staff navigate the, uh, the beast. Uh, I don't think it would take a huge amount of time for them. And the other thing is, get these things in PDF and surf them on Keyword. And so you can go in there and say, "Does it deal with the subject?" And you go, "No, it doesn't."
What I continue to hear you say is that part of the solution has to start with the Upper Klamath.
Yeah.
And the cleansing of the water there.
Yeah.
Restoring the marshes, et cetera, et cetera. It doesn't matter whether you take the dams out.
Well, um, it will help the ecological function of the river. Reservoirs, especially those with nitrogen fixing algae, are adding nutrients to the water. And a, a river actually forces the water.
So I, I, and I do get that.
But it's too much nutrients, so you need both. And, you know...
I guess what I should've said is if you take all the dams out, you still have not attacked the problem because you haven't addressed the upper Klamath.
Yeah. You need, you need some remediation for, you know, so that you actually get the clean water. And then it doesn't matter so much how much water. So, uh, and here's, here's an interesting thing, Dave.
Because the lower Klamath, excuse me, the lower Klamath really needs to be bundled with the Trinity for the solution.
Mm-hmm. Well, the Trinity program, I think, is working. They shaped their, their natural flow patterns like the, the natural hydrograph. They send extra water when there's snow melt. So they're actually thinking, "How did the system originally function?"
So how do we focus on the Upper Klamath?
So that's, that same approach needs to be taken in the Upper Klamath. And you could read the National Science Foundation's critique of the Bureau's natural flow study. But the, the marshes around the lake, it's now been very well studied. They must've spent a million dollars figuring out that marshes are algalidal, they kill algae. So then they started to spend more millions to restore marshes around Upper Klamath Lake. And I'm going, "Oh, good. This is so encouraging." And then they said, "Oh, but the farmland, actually because it was farmed behind the dykes, is now fifteen feet lower than it used to be." And then they go, "Oh, so that's like thirty acres towards, times fifteen feet. Oh, that's like another thirty thousand acre feet of water." So they just pulled the dykes back and flooded the edges of the lake. And the algae loves deep water. And so there's this constant political accommodation that doesn't maintain science as a guide. And, you know, I think for enlightened policy, when you have that kind of disconnect, it's always troubling.
Well, what you pointed out, and I don't want to belabor this or continue this too much more today, is that the partners are missing, whether it's be the Resegini, ourselves, Hoopa, Quartz Valley.
Well, it's been hard to ally against this. The other side is well-funded and kind of mean. And so it's just like, you could expect to be getting chains of emails. Uh, you could be expected to be rudely questioned in public. People's gainful employment has been disrupted. Uh, so it's not, it hasn't been pretty. And I'm, I'm glad actually that the air is going out of its tires because it's, it was a political juggernaut, but not one that I would consider a paragon of, of, you know, political action. It's, it's very distressing, I would say, just for your future consideration. When you go behind closed doors to try to solve problems of Indian rights or environmental rights that can't be solved when you have a complete dialogue, you're generally not gonna get a good solution.
So, Pat, before you sit down. So to sum up what you're asking for from the board...
Um, if you, I would, I would request that, uh, in the Resegini request, that you consider at least filing brief comments, uh, even on a policy level into the record to express your displeasure from both being excluded from the KBRA's crafting, uh, expressing serious reservations about, you know, the, the very controversial issues embedded therein, but being foursquare that, you know, if it is the case that you think that the dam should be removed. So that would be a pretty simple exercise. If you get in, you know, this is just a thicket. If you get in, if you get in...
Or to start the FERC process again.
Hmm?
Or to, to encourage the, the FERC process to start again.
Yeah, yeah. And, and a letter to FERC, uh, at any time. And I can send, uh, templates of communications from Hoopa and the Resegini. Uh, the 401, I'll definitely be back in touch with you. And the Resegini will be soliciting your co-participation because the State Water Board is a political outfit. And then the legislation, um, it's gonna be a while, you know. For starters, though, if you look at the Hoopa, and I'll send you the Resegini comments on legislation, might not hurt to comment on that. Because essentially, it's just this whole thing wadded together in a, in a, in a bill that just says, "Everything is implemented." And so that means, you know, all of the problems that I discussed with you with the DEIS, DEIR, and with the deal, it just basically legitimizes those and creates a great deal of confusion in terms of what the role of the agencies would be going forward. So, I mean, I just, on that basis, so a lot of times when I confront something that this, is this thick, it's kind of like a big thicket, it's a box of smoke, it's better to kind of look at it from a larger view and actually sometimes to look at what it doesn't have in it instead of what it does. Because that's usually hiding something when you put out. That, I hurt my back with that thing. It's about thirty pounds.
Thank you. Any more comments from board members?
I am surprised that there's not somebody speaking out on the other side.
Or the pro-KBRA.
Yeah.
They were here, Troy.
Well, they were here, but I mean, you would think that that would... Anyway, just interesting to me, I just comment.
Seek of trying to, for an attempt to find direction here. I would move that we, um, ask staff to work with Pat on the talking points of our objection to this product, being our lack of involvement, being the, um, lack of addressing nutrient issues, and encourage, um, in that, in those comments, encourage that this process be delayed to allow the 401 process of FERC to be reinstated. And at the same time, send a letter to FERC asking that this problem be dealt with in the proper arena. So that's my motion.
Did you get all that, Jerry? I mean, that was a long one.
I will later.
I think we basically concur, and I would concur if it was direction rather than in the form of a motion, because we may want to debate what that direction actually is.
Then my motion would be that we would direct staff and that they would bring that back before the, well, probably it has to be in the next two weeks in order to meet the deadline of, uh, of the appeal.
Do we have a meeting?
Yes.
Because it was December one. It's due?
No.
No, he said November twenty-first.
November twenty-first.
So we need to act today? So I would like us to direct staff to work with Pat on a...
Let's do the day before.
...letter asking for objection from this report based on our lack of participation, based on the, um, scientific information that identifies that the, um, algae reduction, the algae issue will not be addressed fully in the current...
KBRA.
KBRA. And that we ask that the FERC process be reinstated at the 401.
So, Jay, you can take direction and do, do we have to bring a, a letter back to the board or just...
You won't have time.
Well, that's what, that's what I was trying to get at. We can just direct you to, to do that and send the letter up without it having to come back for approval?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, I think we have agreed on some things. Number one, we agreed on that, um, it was not right to weigh in on something that we were not included on. And then to find out that, uh, there were other entities and governments that weren't included just exacerbates that. We also didn't believe that the, um, the science was fully adhered to but rather politically compromised. And I think those two, we, we stand strong on.
Yeah. I agree with that.
And, uh, and so we can say what we were against. And then I think we need to come back and the last summary is to advocate for a, an all-inclusive, um...
Alternative.
Yeah. A meeting of, of all those that are, all those governments that are affected and finding a holistic approach that keys on the health of the river from the Upper Klamath all the way to the mouth and into the ocean.
Okay.
Yeah. The, my issue is, and I'm not saying that most of the dams shouldn't come out, but how do we, on one hand, say that all the science isn't there and justified? And on the other hand, us turn around and be guilty of what we're accusing other people of is making a firm recommendation on a portion of the solution? It's flawed.
It doesn't address everything.
Right.
To touch on the fact that they're avoiding these issues more.
Sure.
And so that, and that's, that's actually a very strong symbol of the act of justice. The problem with just so innocent and term-of-time arguments that they're just being around. They don't know anything from the flow, the refuges, all of that stuff.
Yeah, we got that.
Okay.
Does staff have a good feel of what we'd like to see?
Thank you.
Will, as soon as first.
That is from board members, Stan?
Yeah.
Make your direction. This meeting is adjourned.
Good job.